Kelly, is that connected to the screen? Okay. All right. We wanted.
From the top?
From the top, reopening the meeting.
I think we've passed the agenda and everything.
Okay.
So apologies for the technical difficulties. Glad to report they were back up and running. So Dr. Johnson, I guess, if you would please.
Sure.
Take us from the top.
All right, well. Apologies for the technical difficulties. We learned about five to 10 minutes in that. The Wi Fi that we used through our little offices was having some technical issues. So that's been resolved. We're back up on our regular livestream. But just as backup, we're also. We're going to stream this through our YouTube page as well, so that you can visit either one and watch this also. This will be recorded. So we're going to take it from the top. We're about a half an hour in, but we're going to. We're going to rewind here and. Provide you all of the details. So first thing I want to note with our, with our. With our meeting tonight, as you can see, if you look around the room, our members are physically distanced by six feet. And we did that on purpose. We wanted to model for you tonight what it might look like in a classroom. When the students are sitting for instruction. So we'll get into the guidelines. We'll stay here a little bit. But the guidelines during direct instruction when students are seated six feet away and they maintain their distance, they may remove their masks. As we have done tonight, if they get up and they break that physical distance, they have to wear a mask. So again, we're going to model that. So with that, we're going to jump into the presentation. Just this, the purpose of this is to provide an overview for the Board of Education and the community just regarding our reopening plans. So we gave you the structure this past Monday. And before we submit this to the state tomorrow, we wanted to give the Board of Education a chance to go through some of the details here. And to provide any feedback that they may have before we hit that final submit button. Of course, this is a living document, and I think that was the intent of the state. So the fact that once we submitted, we're actually submitting links to the document on our website. So you'll see that posted tomorrow. And by living, I mean that as we continue from now until the beginning of school in September, we're going to continue to refine and adjust that plan. To make sure that we're fully prepared to open. So Mrs. Kelly, go to the second slide, please. So as you can see here, this is kind of taken from the top. Timeline of events for COVID-19, this pandemic. As you can see, everything started in early March when we called the state of emergency. Then, if you recall, over the five months there from March till now. We navigated our way through a very quick closure of our schools, getting remote learning up and running with our students and families. Getting through the end of the year and watching daily. And then every two weeks for updates from the governor as to whether or not we're going to go back to school. All the way we were learning remotely the entire year. Sometime in June, the governor had stated that we would receive guidance on reopening schools and the expectations. And that we would have to turn around the plan by early July. That was delayed, and ultimately, that was posted on July 16. From the time that was posted on July 16th, as far as the guidelines from SCP. We had two weeks till tomorrow to craft our plans and submit those. That's going to be important as we get into the details of the planning process and plan here. Because it made for a quick, pretty quick turnaround. But thanks to our outstanding community and the staff and leaders that were involved, we were able to do that. And we have a plan that's over fifty pages long currently. Again, we'll submit them up. Next slide, please. So one of the requirements of the guidelines was to make sure that you were gathering input from your constituents, involving your families, your families. Your staff, your students, as you could. And here are some of the ways that we did that. It started with our looking at the data that was collected by the Monroe County Assessment Project. So this is something that our school's been engaged in for a few years now, our offices. We had about 120, 130 students provide feedback at the end of the year as to what their thoughts around the remote instruction were, around some ideas for improvement. We then launched a thought exchange. This was our first. Take at a crowdsourcing platform and. In late June, we launched this with staff and several ones for families. And then we asked a simple question of what did they think about remote learning? What are some of the things about well, what didn't? And then what were their thoughts about the reopening? We had nearly 100 staff members engaged in that, nearly 300 families at that point. We were able to get some data to get our plan going, and we were able to continue to use that, that process. We then launched in early July, a family reopening survey. This was more detailed. It was an actual survey with around 13 or 15 questions. Again, I can't remember exactly how many. We had over 2,100 families engaged in that. We got some really good data, some of which I'll show you later on here. Then recently, we just launched another thought exchange with our staff this week to allow staff to kind of give us some feedback as to where you're at. And what they think about our current structure that we're proposing for the reopening and to work through. Some of their. Some of their questions. So all told, we had well over 2,600 data points that we're able to feed into that planning process. And to use to craft the best plan that we think for our community. Next slide, please. So here's just an overview of the planning process. Again, there was no roadmap for the process or structure on how to do this. And as we waited for the guidance, sometime in May, we reflected as a district, and we have a health and safety team. Which has been a longstanding team of the district. And that district team's charge is to meet on a regular basis. There's community members, staff members, board members. Some parents. They just talk about the health and safety. And the oversight of that, the general umbrella here for the district. What we learned through the pandemic is we, we have a emergency plans for the district in every building. But we, we discussed. The value of having an actual team that was prepared if an emergency happened to react to that. And so we launched one. We started one in May, and that pulled together some of the people internally with the responsibility and the authority to make decisions. And other people that were important to provide input into that. At this particular incident with the pandemic, this is an ongoing emergency, one that is kind of unique in that fashion. And it's not a moment in time or short period of time. We're actually managing this over the many months. So again, as we were, as we were looking down the road in the reopening. We decided to divide into some subcommittees and enlist even more people into the conversation. We did that through the COVID-19 advisory work groups. We decided to create five of those. And that was a way to pull some of parents, students, community members, and board members into the conversation. Now, how everything worked out is that COVID-19 advisory work groups, those were really kind of a think tank. Where we were taking ideas and information, vetting some things, making sure that we were looking at all the different angles of the decision and the plan. That fed into the emergency management team, and then that information we fed into the leadership team. And about a week ago, we spent a full day with around 25 of us. We rolled up our sleeves, considered everything we knew, took a look at the guidelines when we, when we had those in hand. And we put pen and paper, and we started to mock out the structure that we delivered on Monday. Of course, that was fed into me. The state designated the superintendent as the person that was responsible for crafting and submitting the plan by the 31st. And then I worked with the Board of Education. That's why we're here tonight. And of course, along the way. We not only had members involved in the process through the advisory work groups, but I was also providing updates to the board over those two weeks. All told, I said around 120 people. It actually ended up being more like 150 people were involved in that process. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the advisory night. Excuse me, the COVID-19 advisory work groups, we, like you said, we had five of them. And we looked at some, some research and some articles out there early on. And we took a look at our needs, and we chose these five themes. One of the first tasks was to take a look at everything out there from the CDC and other states and develop some essential questions, some things that we could start to work on. That we knew we were going to have to consider and address. Each one of these lists a kind of the theme of those groups. So we started with the operations and logistics. This group was really targeted at taking a look at how we could deeply open the schools and operate those schools. Be all of the needs for social distancing, hygiene, masking, to make sure their students are safe. Second group, the instructional services. They took a look at how we can maximize our instruction to meet the needs of all of our students. Well, again, making sure that we get our number one priority, priority that's always been number one, and that is to help take care of our students and staff. Third group, the public health and social emotional supports. They did just that. They were charged with making sure that we were considering the support for physical, social, emotional wellness of our students and staff, given the circumstances and the landscape. Fourth committee was charged with considering equity, family, and community needs. So making sure that our plan considers everyone in an equitable way. So we're meeting the needs of all of our students and families. And the last one was specific around transportation and food services. Again, how we're going to provide those, making sure that we're meeting all the guidelines and we're doing it in a safe manner. Next slide, please. So some of the important information that we used from that input. And we went back to that family thought exchange initially around 300 families. The great thing about thought exchanges, people can input thoughts, then other people can rate those, and then they can add thoughts, themes developed. One of the top two themes was around. The need to get our kids back in school. Parents felt very strongly about that. And these are just five of the comments that were within that, one of those, that, that second most highly rated theme. And you can see here, people felt very strongly about getting our kids back face to face with one another and with staff. Why? Because they were worried about the isolation and their students, their children, social, emotional, and mental health. And the connections, you can see that in the second bullet, you know, again, the isolation through that remote learning there early on, they weren't having the connectivity. They were struggling with that, with people and relationships. And again, we know, fourth bullet there, there's no substitute for having our students in front of our teachers. Again, we do synchronous learning for having that back and forth. But you know, you're not able to have the, read the body cues quite as the nonverbal cues, the work, the dialogue, you know, there's. Aspects of that that are compromised. So we want to make sure that we maximize the time that our kids are in front of our staff. Last thing, students were eager to see one another. They missed one another. They missed that social interaction. So we felt that that was another important aspect to consider. Next slide, please. Then we took a look at the family survey results. Again, this was over 2,100 people, families that responded to this. Third question, you can see there, we asked what people's preference was. One of the most highly rated preferences was they wanted schools open fully and safely, to have their kids back full time. And then the second, one of the two most highly rated options was if you can't do that, let's get the kids back in the hybrid model. Altogether, that was seven and a half people out of 10. Seventy-five percent of respondents want their kids back in school, in person, to some degree. I thought also number five, you know, when we were having these discussions in the groups, this would surface as being very important. We asked, how many are considering opening up? So if we do go back in a hybrid or a fully in-person. Structure. Who are the people? How many people feel that they would not be comfortable with that at all and keep their kids home and out for fully remote instruction? As you can see, that was only about 25%. We had over 900 people who wanted their kids back and did not want remote instruction. Then we had about 724 people that were unsure. And I think that's important again to know because those are the folks that over the next five weeks, we need the evidence to them that our plan is safe. Their kids are going to be kept safe. Our staff are going to be kept safe. And we got to show them what we're going to do to ensure that. Next slide, please. So what did we come up with? We sent this out on Monday. This is our basic plan. We'll get into more details here in a minute. But the mantra for our plan was flexible, fluid, and dynamic, right? We know that this is not, you know, this is going to change. We know that. It's been changing since March. We want to make sure that we're, we're keeping a finger on the pulse. We're assessing regularly, gathering feedback for our students and staff and our families. And we're making changes as needed and providing supports as needed. Because this could get better or this could get worse. So we're going to do that. And we built in a day. K through 12, every Wednesday, all kids are going to be learning remotely. We felt that was important because that would give our staff a chance to go through that feedback, to reflect, to refine, to provide targeted supports. Not only for the students, for the staff at large, but one another. Develop themselves. Through professional development and learning and have any additional training that we need to. Yeah, who we start, so. So that's why we chose to have everyone up on that Wednesday. Now, K six, they're going to be back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, all kids. We're using every possible inch in our buildings, our elementary schools and our middle schools. And we're taking the classes and we're splitting them into. So what that means is. The class is going to have no more than about 11, the max, 15 kids in a class. And we mapped it out. We've actually put the furniture out in the classrooms. And anywhere up to actually over 15, we can have kids seated appropriately distanced in the classroom safely. So. You have a teacher that students were assigned, classes were split. That teacher is still going to be the teacher of record for both of those two groups. But a second adult is going to be there supervising and supporting the kids when the teacher of record is not there. And that teacher is going to split their time rotating through between those two groups. Grade seven through 12, students are going to go two days a week. And again, it's limited to groups. No more than 15 per class. And actually, there's probably, you know, in the single digits, two 15 at the max. So kids are going to be distanced while they're receiving direct instruction. You know, we had, we had a really deep conversation on whether or not to structure that with a group A being there Monday and Tuesday. And group B there Thursday and Friday, or what we chose, Monday and Thursday, Tuesday and Friday. And we chose the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday for a few reasons that you see there on the right. And when we looked at that and we really dug into the sanitation, disinfecting, the cleaning, we found that. There's a requirement for us to deeply clean and sanitize every night. Okay, we have to do that anyways, regardless of how we structure those cohorts. And by doing that, we're going to be cleaning every square inch in that facility very thoroughly. Wiping down with a disinfectant that addresses COVID-19. Hanging all the desks, all the high-touch surfaces every day. Right? The only advantage having the kids out of the building will give us. Is what we normally do when kids are on recess or on break. And that is, we go around and we consider to be clean. We dust lockers, we wipe down walls if things got splattered on those. You know, we make shampoo rugs, you know, in a high-traffic area where they brought in dirt, grime, or maybe salt, those types of things. But it doesn't change the level of cleaning, disinfecting, sanitizing that we do. So the advantages really lie on the instructional side. So if we go Monday, Thursday, rather than a kid going Monday, Tuesday, being off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, before they have another point of contact with staff. They have two points of contact during the week spread out. And that gives us better kind of instruction. Better ability to support kids and a better ability to formally assess, reflect, and, and adjust. So that's what we chose to do. So with that, I'm just going to, I think the next slide, Mrs. Kelly, if we go to that. We're going to turn it over to Mr. Brennan, our Assistant Superintendent Finance. He oversees our Executive Director of Operations along with our Transportation Director. So he's going to start out and talk about health and safety. Mr. Brennan, you there?
I am, Dr. Johnson. Thank you very much. So as Dr. Johnson indicated, first and foremost, and always, not just now, health and safety of our staff and students is of paramount importance. And towards that, we are focused on, of course, the health and safety in terms of our current situation. So one question that has come up, of course, is face masks. And everybody has to remember is face masks are critically important, but it's also a, it's a filter and a layer of many other components that I'm going to also talk about. So it's one of the many components we're implementing within our buildings to make sure that our staff and students are safe. Everything that we have in terms of our guidelines for health and safety are tied to. Requirements provided to us by New York State from the Department of Health and the Education Department. And what's known is that face masks are effective in protecting against the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. And as a result, all students and staff as well are required to wear face masks whenever social distancing is not possible. So this is when you're moving through the hallways in a classroom situation where there's not social distancing possible. It could be occurring at the buses as well. But face masks are critical, but it's one component tied with social distancing. We're going to provide necessary training for the proper use of face masks. And we will also have face masks in supply to provide it to anybody who doesn't have one or forgets one, whether that's in the building or on the bus. We also recognize, of course, and anybody that's had, has worn masks recognizes that wearing them for a prolonged period of time can be uncomfortable. And so we're going to be planning into our day's mask breaks. That's going to be directed by the teacher or school administrator. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as I mentioned, the face mask is an important layer of our health and safety and other screening. The screening piece is regarding any symptoms that a person may have. So pre-screening before anyone enters the building is absolutely critical. This would involve a temperature check. This would be involved in terms of ascertaining any COVID-19 symptoms. Any potential exposure to anybody that had the COVID-19 virus. And so we are working with a company, putting in basically a mobile app. That'll allow people to screen and answer questions that'll help provide guidance. Most, number one thing to remember is if you have any COVID-19 viruses, if you're presenting with a temperature, if you feel like you've been exposed to the virus, stay home. Don't come to the buildings. And then, of course, after that, contact your local health official or the health department for additional information. If it's critical, the screening piece is another important. Another important layer in terms of our overall health and safety approach to making sure our staff and students are safe in the buildings. Next slide, please. But what happens in the building if we feel like somebody may be exhibiting some symptoms? Someone develops a temperature during the day? Well, they're going to, upon getting to the health office, they're going to be immediately separated from other students. And supervised until their parent or legal guardian or emergency contractor can retrieve them from the school. And then they can consult with their doctor and health department. We do, of course, just like any kind of health issue, we treat those as sensitive and confidential. And they're going to be therefore safely and respectfully isolated from others. We're going to make sure in those situations that the spaces are properly disinfected. We're going to follow the CDC and Department of Health guidelines. And when these situations come up. We are not going to be working in isolation. We'll be working in concert with our district physician, as well as the Monroe County Health Department, who will. Who will be important in terms of providing next steps for us to follow. And then communication with the larger school community, district personnel and staff will be under the direction of the Superintendent Schools, Dr. Johnson, and our Public Information Department. Next slide, please. Dr. Johnson mentioned cleaning and disinfecting is absolutely right. That's going to be occurring on a daily basis. So cleaning, remember, cleaning is really focused on the physical removal of any kind of dirt, grime. From the surfaces themselves and disinfection is using specific chemicals that are effective against the COVID-19 virus. To re, to eliminate any of those virus or germs that are remaining on the surfaces. Well, we're going to be doing that on a daily basis in all of our buildings. And in fact, when this pandemic first occurred back in March, we consulted with health department officials. As well as our vendors that provide the products we use for disinfection. And we made sure that there was proper cleaning and safety protocols in place for using of these chemicals in our buildings. In addition to that daily cleaning and disinfection, there's going to be ongoing throughout the day routine cleaning and disinfection of high-contact surface areas. That may be touched by different people during the day, such as light switches, handrails, desk surfaces, doorknobs, and handles. And then special attention also has to be paid to higher-risk areas. An example could be the health office and lunchrooms. So at grade seven through 12, I'll talk about that a little bit later, but they'll be eating in the cafeteria socially distant. And so part of our routine will be to making sure that tables are, are clean and disinfected before the next group of students comes in to eat at those tables. Next slide, please. Another layer, again, tied to basically instruction is making sure we're instructing around proper hand hygiene. So we're going to make sure we have the correct products in place, the hand sanitizers, the soaps. And we're going to, part of our instruction is the expectation that all, all individuals entering and exiting the building will be required to use a hand sanitizer. We're going to be providing training through the forum videos on our website, as well as direct instruction in our classrooms in an age-appropriate fashion. It's going to be at the first day of school, then periodically reinforced throughout the school year. We're going to provide frequent hand washing opportunities throughout the day. And of course, we're always going to be paying special attention to before and after the use of any playgirl equipment, common equipment. Before eating food and of course, before and after using the restroom too. It's always important and part of our instruction, after you're leaving a public place, anytime where you've had to blow your nose, cough, or sneeze. Anytime you've handling a face cloth covering. And so again, a lot of these guidelines are all, are told to us, we're following the CDC guidance. Next slide, please. And it's just remember, you know, as, as been said a few times, it is our top priority. We do still have other requirements tied to health and safety that aren't directly related to COVID-19. And these are our required evacuation and lockdown drills. They will be occurring. However, we are being provided some flexibility in terms of how they are done. So that we can help ensure social distancing is occurring. We require masking during those drills. And we're going to make sure that all students have an opportunity to engage in those evacuation drills. While we are going to be using our Raptor visitor management system as a way of pre-screening our visitors and contractors prior to enter the building as well. Next slide, please. And the next section is on transportation, but before I get into that, I do want to just mention tied to health and safety. Your things like masks, disinfectants, cleaners. You know, different screening tools, you know, there is, I'm just going to make a note, although this wasn't necessarily. Key to our overall presentation, I just want to note that, you know, there are obviously costs to all these things. And so, you know, the, there will be pieces where we're going to monitor our use of budget towards these things. But this is why we have savings and reserves. So we have contingent funds built in within our budgets themselves, variance is built in. And then as the year progresses and as we track the expenses tied to this, there may be needs to revisit our budget. Appropriate additional fund balance, where we're allowed to keep 4% of unappropriate fund balance for unanticipated contingencies like this. And we have reserves as well. So it'll be something we'll have to be looking at and reviewing. Periodically and ongoing throughout the year, but just sign to note as well. I do want to also talk about transportation, of course, because that's another key component from our COVID-19 subgroup. So if you could take the next slide, please, I can take us through a few details on that. As with, in our buildings as well, our students and transportation staff are required to wear face coverings at all times on the buses. While you're entering the bus, bus, exiting, and it's seated. And to the extent practicable, because we know the room on a bus isn't, isn't the same as a classroom, that we will be. Appro, doing our best to maintain appropriate social distancing on the bus. But towards that, again, these layers of protection, that's why the masks are absolutely required at all times on them. We're going to provide them to the students at the bus as needed, so they can get to school. We're going to, just like our buildings are going to be, the buses are going to be clean and disinfected on a daily basis. We're going to, just like our buildings are going to be, the buses are going to be clean and disinfected on a daily basis. And just like our school buildings, we're going to ensure that those high contact spots, railings and someone are wiped down with disinfectant between our bus runs as well. As weather permits, particularly at the beginning of the year when it's warmer, we're going to be utilizing the roof fence on the buses to increase ventilation during transport. And again, going back to some of our health and safety pieces earlier on, hand sanitation, students are going to sanitize and clean their hands upon entering the building from the bus as well, it's an extra layer of health and safety protection. Next slide, please. We're continuing to develop our routes with the goal of which efficiency is always important, but especially important this year is reducing rider density on the buses, bringing down the number of students on a particular bus. We have ongoing communication with families, making sure we have a most accurate measure in terms of whose is and is not riding the buses. The is not part is important towards, again, further driving down the rider density. And then we are continuing to coordinate with our contract transportation providers, that's for student in East Aronicoi that and developing strategies with them to assist in further reducing that rider density, such as increasing the number of available buses for our runs, providing larger capacity buses to allow kids to spread out more and then altering bus routes to minimize occupancy at any time. Next slide, please.
Okay, I'm going to pick up from James, this is Chrissy Miga, the K6 Director of Instruction. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education members. Thanks for having us tonight so that we can share our plan. And so first, I'm going to talk about the overall K6 hybrid model. Many of you have already seen these details of what we're offering for students as far as in-person instruction. So all general education students are going to attend on Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. Dr. Johnson already spoke to our Wednesday Remote Learning Day for students and planning and professional development for classroom teachers and teacher assistants. And special education, it was stated that we will maximize instruction for those students. And as we continue to finalize plans, student, our Student Services Department will send personalized communications to families to let them know when and how their students will be attending, because that is, does vary based on program. But we're going to maximize, so hoping to get some of our special education students in those five days a week, which we anticipate, and again, that will depend on the program. We move to the next slide. So what will this look like when we are in person? And the first aspect to talk about is the hours of operation. Now, these hours of operation will look very similar to the ones that we've typically had in the past. And again, this is for those four days of in-person instruction. So the North End will be from 8:00 AM to 2:30 and the South End schools will be from 9:00 AM to 3:30. And as a reminder, North End is Iroquois, Seneca, Colebrook and Listwood. And our South End schools are Rogers, South Fawn, Briarwood and Brookfield. And so you can see the bullets for each or the details are the same, just for slightly different timeframes. And so these hours of operation are important because it shows us how our teachers and TAs will be with student groups or cohorts, starting right at 8:00 AM and until 2:30 or starting right at 9:00 AM and until 3:30 when students arrive and dismiss. So students will come to their buildings and they will go directly to their classrooms. Typically, in the past, we've had students go into their buildings, they might wait in the hallway, they might wait in a cafeteria or an all-purpose room. But in order to comply with social distancing measures and keep all of our students safe, they will go directly to classrooms. So that will give about a half hour of arrival time from 8:00 to 8:30 or 9:00 to 9:30. And then a half hour of dismissal time and both arrival and dismissal will be staggered. So again, students will be able to be distanced at both of those times to ensure that their safety. Next slide. So though that was our hours of operation for in-person days, Wednesdays will be our remote learning days. So for students, this will be asynchronous experiences that might include videos, assignments through the learning management platform, which at K3 will be consistent. We will consistently use CSO, which is a developmentally appropriate learning management platform for that, those grade levels. And at 4, 6, we'll use Schoology, which is what we have been using in district up to this point. So they might be doing some independent work that was sent home on Tuesday, readings. So there will be a variety of at-home learning experiences or remote learning experiences for our students. We are working right now to see if we could have some specials that might be held virtually. And I'll talk more about specials later in the presentation, and this would be in addition to in-person specials. And one of our pieces of New York State guidance or mandates has been that attendance would be taken daily. And so in this virtual setting, even on Wednesdays, we will be taking student attendance. That's what it will look like for the students, for teachers and teachers assistants assigned to student groups. This is going to be a time for planning, professional development and collaborating. And as I talk more about the actual structure of the day, you'll see why this day is very essential to the instructional integrity that we need to put in place during the in-person learning. So if we can go to the next slide. So what does it look like? And how did we, one of the questions that we've heard a lot of is how, how are we actually fitting everybody into the buildings? And so if you can just click forward again, one time on the slide. So what we did is in order to fit our students and to socially distance and still have them come four days a week, we had to look carefully at all of the available space in our buildings and spread out our students. So if you take a look at this first example, you'll see that this is representative of a K3 building. And if you look at the first three columns, you see K1, K2 and K3. These represents three groups of students that were originally two classrooms. So typically at our K3 buildings, we have two sections of students, two classrooms of students. But obviously with social distancing, those then become smaller groups and spread out. So you can see that K1 would be located in room 150. And there's about 13 students in that group. K2 located in room 146, 13 students in that space. And K3, they're located in room 153 and 11 students in that space. Another important thing to note and that a question that occurred was, so how did we staff spreading out our students? And so you can see we're using our classroom teachers in addition to teacher assistants in most cases with some other staff members as well. But if you, if you look at how those three sections of kindergarten or smaller groups look now, you can see that K1 for arrival has a teacher, K2 has a teacher and K3 has a teacher assistant. And I say for arrival because the idea is then those three professionals, the teacher, the two teachers and teacher assistant work together as a team to provide instruction to students. So the group of students in K3 would not be with a teacher assistant all day. They would be getting class in-person instruction from a certified teacher. And that would occur because the teachers will rotate. And Dr. Johnson spoke a little bit about that at the beginning. One thing to note is in some of our larger spaces where we could have more students, but still absolutely six foot distance, you can see if you go to the second grade, number three cohort, they are in our all-purpose room, which is a fairly large space. So we are able to accommodate 21 students, however, they are still socially distanced at the same rate in any other classroom.
Interject and do that. So I just want to make sure that people understand when we talk about, you know, an average of anywhere from 11 to 15, that's in the classroom. It is important to point out that in the district, we do have some larger spaces that we're going to make use of. That will allow for slightly larger groups like you see there, but they are going to be properly physically distanced by six feet. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, if you just click again. And here's an example of a fifth grade class of students. So originally, this fifth grade was six classes of students or six sections of students that is now socially distanced, broken into 11, 11 smaller groups. So each getting their own room and then again, getting assigned though that either a teacher or a teacher assistant for for their arrival and dismissal. But again, as I spoke to in the K3 model, these teachers will work together as teams and they will decide how it best looks for them to rotate while still trying to minimize you know, any, any type of exposure. But so we will work together to create those, those instructional models. Our work group, our instructional work group has been working very hard at this so that we can provide teachers some models to work for, and then those teams can have some autonomy to create a really sound instructional program for students. Next slide.
Sure, we have a question.
On that last slide there, you said that each work group would plan together? Or would all three of the work groups?
So for grade five, are you asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the teams of teachers, so yeah, you would have, and that planning occurs anyways, our teachers already planned prior to COVID and in grade level teams. But yes, absolutely. So that K example, those three, the two teachers and the TA would, that's why Wednesday is so essential because those teams need time to plan together. And so in fifth grade, you would have the smaller team of teachers for each of those blocks of colors planning together as well as your typical grade level planning that has occurred in the past. Okay, so how were the groups created and how do we all fit? We've spoken a little bit about this already, but the groups or at least the tentative groups were created through a team of building principals, team leaders at the building and building reps. As we've mentioned, we're utilizing every available space in our buildings K through six. And these tentative groups were based on the number of students that could safely fit into the classrooms six feet apart. And just to mention that those rosters of students are certainly not finalized yet. I know typically we get or we're able to send out our student placements or teacher assignments the first week of August. Obviously, that's going to need to be pushed back so that we can adjust the groups as we learn who might be doing remote learning and who is, who is coming in for in-person instruction. So we're really looking for that date to be pushed back to more mid-August, somewhere around August 21st. But mid-August is what we're shooting for to let people know their teacher assignments. Okay, if we go to the next slide. So some non-negotiables of creating this type of structure was first, and we've spoken to this a little bit already, that there's equitable access to a classroom teacher for every group of students. So again, there won't be one group of student that is with a teacher assistant all day. There will be an equal amount of time that all students are with classroom teachers as well as all of the independent work and planning will be done by that homeroom teacher for the students. And so parents will still have a point of contact for, for their student, even though there's teams of teachers working, you'll still know which teacher you reach out for, for your child moving forward. And our other non-negotiable, along with that equitable access to a classroom teacher, is we wanted to make sure that we maintained a sense of community for all of our students. So that no matter what group they're in, no matter what space that they're in, that they all truly feel like this is their space for learning, that they are important members of the community. And with that, we're also planning for important social emotional learning or SEL components to our daily instruction, because we know this is going to be a big transition back. And we want to be able to support that whole child, which we've always spoken to. But this is really a time where we need to look at how are we really supporting each of our students, both academically, socially and especially emotionally. If you go to the next slide. So a couple additional details that we know have been questions that have been asked quite a bit. We will still have specials at the K6 level. They'll obviously be at a somewhat reduced rate because we're only in person four days out of the five-day week. And because of the increased number of student groups, there'll be a little bit less time than a typical special. So we're shooting for 20 minutes of a special at K3 and 30 to 45 minutes at grades four through six. We're also attempting to offer specials by quarter or semester so that this actually helps our staff who, who are the specials teachers, so that they are actually limiting their exposure. You know, instead of being with an entire grade or excuse me, entire building, every day they might be with just one grade level. So working through, through those pieces, our specials will be held in the classroom again to minimize you know, mixing cohorts and exposure for students. We will still incorporate recess. Movement is going to be incredibly important for our students in this structure. If you've ever been in our classrooms before, we rarely have rows just set up, but we'll obviously need to do that for our social distancing guidelines. And so being able to allow for students to move and play and be outside is important. And that will be done on a staggered schedule again to minimize mixing the cohorts or that exposure. And students will on playgrounds then have to wear masks because we can't necessarily promise that they will stay six feet of playing on playground. And we can always think about if there's any student that's uncomfortable with that option, we can think we have other open spaces where they might be able to play separately than on the playground. And lunch, and James will get a little bit more into this later as well. Lunch will be held in the classroom at the students' desks, which will be six feet apart. So obviously they'll be able to be unmasked while eating, which is essential. They'll still have their typical menu available for purchase or students can bring their lunch. And the lunches that they do purchase will be delivered to students. And was there a question? Okay, sorry, sorry. And so those are just some of the additional details for K6.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Karen Finter. I'm the Director of 712 Instruction. Good evening to the Board of Ed and to the members of our community. Thank you for hanging in there with us while we ironed out some of those technical difficulties. As Dr. Johnson mentioned earlier this evening, you know, receiving the guidance on July 16th. I, I really am so proud of the way that our work groups with teachers, parents, students, the administrative team really came together to prioritize. And one of the pieces of the guidance that came to light was really prioritizing, you know, the needs of our youngest learners, the needs of our fragile learners, the needs of our special education students, our English, English language learners and social emotional needs. And, and I feel the way that we have come together to build this structure of both K6 and 712 really helps to do that and foster that. So without compromising, by the way, a comprehensive education program that Aronicoi is known for while maintaining the safety of our students and our faculty and our community. So for our 712 model, the structure of the model is that students will attend two days a week in person. When not in person, students will engage in remote learning three days, three days a week. Students will be grouped in either a blue group or a gold group. And those groups really will be determined by the alphabet. Families with different last names, differing last names can have students grouped together to make, make that easy on the family dynamic. We know that there'll be some section rebalancing that might need to be done to keep to that socially distant number of students that can fit in our secondary classrooms. You know, between 11 and 14, 15 students, depending on the space. Our special education students and our English language learners, depending on their need and their program, will be scheduled to attend additional in-person days. We know that our arrival and dismissal on our big campus buildings We know that our arrival and dismissal on our big campus buildings will need to be staggered. And so those arrival and dismissal times will be assigned to students. There'll be a window of entry time and a window of exit time. In addition to having specific doors where students will be entered into the building and checked in. And as I mentioned, some of, some of the fine details will be dialed in at the building level in regards to the protocols for entering the building for checking in and that sort of thing. And go to the next slide, please. Our Wednesdays are remote learning days for students. They could have asynchronous or, or not altogether online experiences. And it could include videos that might be assigned through their classroom teacher, assignments through Schoology, independent work that's at home previously or, or in-class reading assignments. There might also be some synchronous activities, which is a bit different from our remote, remote learning experience this spring. Thinking about how to really ensure that we're checking in with students and, and monitoring their social emotional wellbeing, monitoring their capacity to manage time out of the classroom and be an independent learner, using advisory groups to conduct those check-ins. So a classroom teacher may have a group of 10 students that they're, they're dialing in with on those Wednesdays, just to sort of conduct a check-in or to do a small group mini lesson with. In addition to office hours, when students have questions as they're engaging in independent work. In addition, we might have some students coming back to campus on Wednesdays. I mentioned our special education students, our English language learners. Related services may be provisioned during that time for different programs. In addition to students that might need to use some specialized equipment, some of the computers, computer softwares for Project Lead the Way, for instance, may be available to students during that time based on a, on a schedule to ensure that social distancing can, can still remain. Again, as, as Mrs. Miga mentioned, attendance will be taken virtually, whether students are in person or are engaging in remote learning out of the classroom, that attendance mandate is daily. And for faculty and staff, those Wednesdays will really be a time to plan, to work together and collaborate, really dial into the essential standards that have been identified, you know, as we're trying to make up for some lost ground potentially last spring, but then also make sure that kids are ready for the opportunities that lie ahead this year. And so that time will be available for faculty and staff on Wednesday to check in with students to make sure that they're maintaining that pace and under level of understanding necessary to be successful in their studies. Okay, next slide. You'll notice the hours of operation don't change very much from date to the high school. We're really looking to dial in instruction from eight fifteen to two forty-five and use the half hour prior and the half hour after to do that staggered dismissal and release and exit and entry into the building. We want to make sure that we're allowing for classroom sanitization, social distancing, and minimizing congestion and congregation. So students will transition through their day, but those transitions may be staggered. Using things like unidirectional hallways or very clear, clearly monitor large space hallway traffic pattern, again, to minimize congregation. Next slide. As Mrs. Miga mentioned, you know, the non-negotiables regarding instruction, making sure that access was equitable, that, that students had access to their teachers when they needed them. In addition to making sure that students have a comprehensive experience and have a sense of community and a sense of belonging, that face-to-face need is being met. And so our instructional work group and the 712 participants in that work group really anchored to these non-negotiables and wanted to make sure that our plan reflects these important values for our community. Again, while preserving the safety for, for all. And then lastly. Next slide, thank you. Some questions around PE and music. They're not considered specials at the secondary level, but they're an important part of the instructional day. Those programs will be provided, but additional precautions and social distancing measures will be taken. According to the state guidance for physical education, it's a 12-foot social distance. We'll, we'll operate outside wherever possible. For music performance, again, it's a 12-foot social distance. And again, we can utilize different mechanisms to make sure that we're keeping kids safe, using virtual lessons, using virtual performance technique and critique to maintain that. We know that Schoology is the learning management system that will be used, will continue to use that. But we know we have some improvements to make in how it's used. And we'll be supporting staff and making sure that they have really clear structure and parameter on how to use Schoology to its, to its benefit. We'll also be reaching out to families to make sure that we're showing them how to access resources in Schoology with their students so that they can be a support at home. Teacher teams are developing instructional models aligned to research-based best practices for rollout in August and things like standards-based grading. We know that, that our hold harmless when we had to come to an abrupt stop of instruction and then restart fully remote last spring really caught a lot of students and staff off, off guard. This year, we, we have to hit the ground running and we know that, that grading and assessing is an important part of that. And then finally, we'll continue the training for use of different conferencing tools like Zoom-like teams. So that students, if they are engaging in full remote learning, will still be able to access instruction in that way. Okay. Food service, James.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, so food service, some of this was discussed by Mrs. Miga previously, but I'm going to reinforce some important parts here. Food service is continuing. We know that food service actually continued through the end of June in the, during our closure. But food will be provided to students onsite. They're going to be provided and the students will be put in environments where they're socially distanced so that obviously they can eat without having any face coverings. So that they will not need to wear those face coverings when they're seated and eating at other times, particularly at the secondary level when they're in serving lines, even though they are going to be socially distanced. They need to wear masks when they're moving around. Again, we're going to, as I mentioned earlier, under the health and safety piece, we're going to continue to reinforce and teach proper hand sanitization routines prior to and following eating. And of course, we still are, have to meet the requirements of our child nutrition program. However, we're going to be going at least in the beginning to a more of a streamlined grab and go or bag lunch format. And this is to really minimize contact between servers and students. And even though we will have days at a remote, we will continue to serve meals during those remote days. So students who are remote will be able to access meals, will be able to pick up meals daily at a central district location. Next slide, please. And again, some of this is a reinforcement of what Mrs. Miga mentioned. So K six, they are going to be serve their meals in the classrooms themselves at their individual desks. So we're going to be delivering the meals to classroom by district personnel. At grade seven through 12, it's going to occur in the cafeteria. Social distancing will be followed, both in the serving lines and while eating meals at the individual tables. Our servers are going to be wearing appropriate personal protection equipment, including face coverings and gloves. Service lines are going to be equipped with polycarbonate, much less, much like Plexiglas, just a more durable surface, surface dividers. And then because they're going to be eating at common places, tables prior to the next cohort of students beginning their meal service, all those common services will be clean and disinfected by district employees. Next slide.
Good evening, folks. I'm Dan Fullerton, the K-12 Director of Technology. And thanks for your patience this evening. As we dive in here, I want to thank Dr. Sue Flood and our Director of Student Services and Barb Bruton, our Director of Community Education, as we led some of these efforts to put all this together as well as the entire team. But our first question was, how will equity be addressed during conversations about reopening schools, including biracial individuals, persons of color, students with disabilities, English language learners, and the LGBTQ community? So as we were looking at that, our general goal, our initiatives are set to level the playing field for all students. Looking at reading empowerment, especially in the younger grades, student voice and choice, incorporating diverse perspectives and cultures in all that we do, integrating social emotional learning into our daily practices. And a continuing theme you're going to see, accessing supports inside and outside the classroom as needed. We're developing a coalition for diversity and equity, focusing on supports and services for students with additional needs. And one example of that is the addition of a COVID-19 counselor to our staff. Next slide, please. Couple, but that is, how are we going to provide one-to-one devices to our students in our hybrid and remote learning model, models? So number one, we are deploying Windows laptops to all students K-12 throughout the district, with the target of full distribution at the beginning of the school year. As you heard briefly previously, we're also implementing age-appropriate learning management systems for all students K-12. Grades four through 12 will see Schoology again. And in K three, we're moving to seesaw, which is a little bit more targeted toward the younger grades. We're also looking at what we can do to provide tech support systems for students, faculty, and parents. Building a public-facing website as a knowledge base with tutorials, looking at potential office hours, evening support hours, things like that, to just make everything smoother for all of our, all of our constituents. And finally, we're implementing enhanced remote device management systems going into place right now that should allow us better access to manage devices, to troubleshoot, to put software on and off devices as needed so that we can improve the, the functioning of these systems for all of our kids. Along with that, we have to ensure that we have broadband access for all of our students as well. So we've embarked upon a fantastic partnership with Aronda Quaid Public Library. They've been just amazing in that they are offering free mobile hotspot loans for Aronda Quaid residents that's prioritized for students' needs. And if you need to get a hotspot, you can do it by calling or texting the library at the number that's shown there, emailing them at arondaquaid@libraryweb.org with name, address, and phone number. And one of their staffers will get back to you within 48 hours with directions on how to pick that up. And we've tested it out ourselves and it works very, very smoothly. And another big one, what are the plans for clubs, sports, and other after-school opportunities? Well, the start of athletics has been postponed to at least September 21st, pending further guidance. The district is evaluating extracurriculars to determine if they're able to meet in person remotely, hybrid or not at all. So that's going to be done on an individual activity. But this community education fall session is supposed to start on October 5th with the blend of remote and in-person classes. But of course, depending on guidance, those in-person classes may be postponed. The K six extension program for before and after-school care will happen. Plans are being finalized with guidance from a number of organizations, including NISID, the CDC, the Department of Health, the Child Care Council. So lots of folks providing input to help us finalize those plans. And our parent advocate for students with special needs facilitator is preparing a booklet regarding daycare options, opportunities, and resources for special needs children and all children in the district. So we're looking forward to having and sharing that with you as well.
Everybody, Board of Education, Dr. Johnson, thank you for having us all here tonight. I am Michelle Kramer, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. And I'm just going to circle us back tonight in terms of some of the things that we will be doing to manage illness. We will consistently be symptom monitoring that includes training of staff to notice symptoms and within themselves and in our students. We're going to always consume, assume that COVID-19 is positive unless it's proven differently. We will continue to keep our personnel and students' medical information confidential and case-sensitive. So students, staff, if they're feeling ill, displaying any symptoms will be respectfully isolated away from others. So in order to do that, we will have really two dedicated spaces in each building. We will child nursing space for things like medication management and injuries. We will have an ill child nursing space or an illness isolation room, which is a dedicated space for symptom monitoring, supervision of students, and a waiting area until parent or guardian arrives. And go to the next slide. If a person, we're made aware of a person that tests positive for COVID-19, we will automatically be in connecting with the Monroe County Department of Health, where we will work with them in terms of protocols and next steps. Our extra cleaning and disinfecting protocols will be put in place. We will communicate through our public relations office, always maintaining confidentiality of the student or the personnel that may be involved. Through that collaboration with the Monroe County Health Department, that's where our cohort groups, our sign-in procedures, all those things that we put in place will be so important because we'll be able to identify the most likely path that an individual has had in each of our buildings to dedicate to that, to notify specific people if needed.
Shelley, you might, you might have to make a quick comment?
Sure.
So there's been some questions around when we may close a building or when the district would close, and there isn't a clear answer to that. So the, the guidance that we've received is that in situations like that, as Michelle had mentioned, our first caller, actually probably the first caller of us is going to be from the Monroe County Commission of Public Health. And he's going to talk to us and inform us that there's been a positive case, or perhaps, you know, if things were to get worse, a number of positive cases. And then they will walk us through, as Michelle's indicated, through contact tracing and, and assessing that situation, what that threshold would be. You know, the very minimum, if there's a positive case in the community, somebody that has either interacted with one of our staff or children or somebody that has been in the building, the staff or student, we will shut down for 24 hours. And again, the cleaning and sanitation, sanitization that we talked about, we will make sure that that happens before anybody returns to the buildings. And again, working in collaboration with the Monroe County Department of Health, they'll give us a go-ahead of when the students can return. Okay, so I just want to point out, because I know there's questions out there about the what, when, and the how. And again, it's going to be critical that we work directly with those folks and everything.
Dr. Johnson, if a student or staff member were to test positive, would there be an expectation that remaining members of that pod or cohort would need to self-isolate, or is that going to be on a case-by-case basis?
So I expect that they would have to. But again, that's going to be part of that contact tracing that they go back. And right, if we have everything in place and it works well, and kids are wearing their masks, right? When they're not able to socially distance, and they're socially distant when they're wearing, when they're, excuse me, if they're wearing their mask when they're not able socially distance, and they're, and they're socially distant when they're not wearing their masks, then I'm sure that the commissioner is going to take that into consideration. My assumption is that everyone would have to quarantine, but I don't know the exact answer to that until we're in that situation. And we have not been given specific guidance on that.
So how would that, just with that example you said, if we're having teachers move among groups, does that mean, and I'll just use that, Chrissy's K three, or I call it K three, kindergarten, three groups, K one, K two, K three. If the teachers, I think she said the teacher will be supplying like instruction going through those rooms.
Yeah.
What would that mean? Like, does that mean the group, I'll say three, someone was positive, right? And the teacher's been in that room, how is that a fact? And then she goes into the other room, like, I don't know.
So that's the point. The teacher's going to be masked throughout that, Mr. Day. And again, what the guidance that we've been given is social distancing or masking or, or the dividers, as Mr. Brennan had talked about. So if done right, you're minimizing the risk and spread. But again, as they go through that and they analyze that, they're going to assess that and provide guidance. Part of our plan from the state was to try to to reduce the groups of kids to the best of our abilities, right, in the cohorts or sometimes you'll hear them referred to as pods. So much easier to lower grades. So much easier at lower grades, because that happens naturally, right? At the upper grades, more complex because of the schedule and the complexity of the courses that are scheduled because of the number of elective courses that we offer. All right, so we're able to minimize those to the best of our ability. But again, when you talk about a shutdown and the amount of space that we're going to have to clean and sanitize, you're absolutely right. It's going to be impacted by the people that are traveling there. But they're going to take the precautions to make sure that there isn't spread and that they're maintaining their social distance when they're not wearing masks. Our staff are going to be wearing masks at all times.
I have a related question, but I guess now that we're asking these questions, it sort of fits. I haven't heard anything about bathroom breaks.
We'll get it.
Thank you.
All right.
So in addition to some of our personnel considerations, our staff will have professional development on identifying symptoms, how to do their own self-help screens, and their effective and appropriate use of their personal protective equipment. So wearing masks appropriately, when to wear them, how to socially distance, all those pieces so that everybody has that same level of understanding. Similar to the work that we will also do with students to teach them these pieces. There's, it's important that we have a staff component as well. Go to the next slide. So there's a lot in the documentation about how are we going to support our personnel that are vulnerable populations. So some of our staff that may be at risk, immunocompromised or other health issues, maybe somebody at home. And there is an interactive process to determine if an employee qualifies for leave or an accommodation. And when we talk about accommodations, it can range anywhere from extra personal protective equipment that we provide for them, things like physical barriers. And then if there is a need and it fits their, the work that they do, another accommodation might be telework. So there is a whole legal process that staff members will go through. And the Human Resources Office would help them through that. And then for our staff, there will be some specific information coming their way that will also help them through this process.
Okay, so this is where we kick it back over to me and this will close out our presentation for board and Mr. Payne. Just so that you know that your question's not going to be ignored, that that question was asked as one of the questions prior. So we'll answer that here as we move into those, okay? So the next steps here, between now and when we open school, we're looking at a list here. This is a tentative list. I'm sure there's other activities as far as communication and dialogue that we'll have. This is what we know. Tomorrow, we are expected to submit our plans. Again, this is a living document. It's going to be posted on our website tomorrow. It's the tail end of the day. I'll expect by 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. And there will be links on every building's website for that building's plan. Right now, they'll look pretty similar. And in the next month, they will diverge a bit as we continue to specialize and determine some of the details. You heard some of those tonight. That work will continue over the course of the next few weeks. We'll also submit a plan to the Department of Health that's also a requirement. On the third, we're having a town hall, one for K-6 staff and one for 712. Any district-wide staff are invited to either one, depending on how they would associate themselves. And we're just going to have a dialogue using Zoom, just around some of their thoughts, maybe questions, maybe worries, provide information. Many of them are watching tonight, I'm sure. Our next board meeting is on the 13th of August, so that's a study session. We're going to be having another reopening update. What I anticipate is that we're going to have a presentation which will include the latest updates from our five advisory groups. So there'll be more information and a greater level of detail around the buildings, like you said, some of those plans diverge. I'm going to recommend to the board to change the school calendar revision, and so I've already made you aware of that. So that's something I'm going to ask you to consider. And putting that out there is a potential change tonight, knowing that you're going to have to go through that process of consideration and potential approval. On the 14th of August, that Friday, we said that is the deadline for requests. If you're going to opt out of transportation, if you're going to opt into fully remote. Now, again, we're going to work with families. We have to have a deadline for planning, and Christian Neegah talked a little bit about this. Having an accurate number on the number of students that are going to be opting into remote learning is important as we determine the classes of the students. The people that are going to opt out of transportation is important as we determine the number of bus rooms and buses that we're going to have. So families could, I know that some folks who contacted me and were waiting on additional information. So tonight, we're providing some. We're going to continue to provide information on that remote learning platform. So you'll hear more of that over the next couple of weeks, and for sure, more details on the 13th. So people will be making those decisions. We're going to continue the weekly reopening reports every Monday. As I said, we're going to hit some of the masking requirements. We're going to hit how we're going to disinfect and sanitize our buildings and clean those. And then we're going to hit how we're going to socially distance and what that looks like in different spaces. So that'll be the upcoming one. In early August, we're going to put all the questions together that we've had into FAQ. So tonight, we're going to address as many as we can. There's going to be some that are still in process. Those we noted, put them in a parking lot, and those will be part of that document. Mid to late August, you'll see student schedules again. That's going to be dependent on the number of people that opt into the remote option. And then what we anticipate, this is potential, right now, the calendar, we have scheduled the second and third as superintendent's conference days and professional helmet days. Our staff, we're proposing that we add the eighth and ninth. So taking our superintendent's conference day from April and our one from October, moving those to the front of the year to give us the time to properly train our staff, to properly receive our staff, because everybody's coming from a different place. So we have to process through the emotions of just coming back. Some of that planning that we talked about, some of that preparation to make sure that we're ready to hit the ground running on the 10th, which would be the first day for students. And that would allow both groups at grade seven through 12 to be there at least one day during that first week of school, rather than starting on a remote day, okay, that Wednesday. So we feel that's a good structure. So before I close here, and we'll open it up to any more questions from the board and dialogue. And then after that, we'll get to questions from the community. First of all, apologize about the technical difficulties. Of course, we didn't anticipate that. I just want to thank Jeff DeVeronica and Dan Folichin for working through that. You know, situations like that are tough. They did a nice job of resolving that and getting this back up there. I also want to thank the staff, you know, they put up their timeline and our leaders, and of course, you, the Board of Education, you know. It's been a long haul since March, you know, and everybody's been grinding away. We really haven't had a break with this. Many of our staff members have been on since March. Our leaders certainly have as far as leading the reaction when we first had to go remote and now planning for fall, planning for everything that happened over the summer. You know, and you, so this is stressful. And then, of course, you have our families at home, you know, and they've been filling in and supporting their children, sometimes filling that role of the teacher at home, giving them materials to learn remotely. And so we know that that's been tough. So just want to acknowledge that and appreciate the people stuck with it. You know, there's been a lot of trust from the district. Very willingness, high willingness to collaborate, provide input, and to have quotes. So that's been extremely helpful. So thank you. And then lastly, I just want to make sure that, you know, when you saw me get up and leave today, we had a student thing that's thought of playing hide-and-go-seek out there. So that was the knock on the door. Somebody tried to break them in there, just having some good fun. There's a family, so. So I'll turn it over to the board if there's any questions before we move into the questions from the community.
I had a quick, just a technical one. When you're going through the slideshow inside of Dakin High School, when kids switch classes, the rooms would be sanitized in between. Do we have the custodial staff to do that? That's a lot of rooms.
So just to clarify, when kids, when they're eating lunch and there's a change there, the tables are going to be cleaned. When they're changing classes, no. I mean, the cleaning and sanitation will happen, or sanitization will happen during evenings, like normal would. Now, we've discussed this, Mr. Payne, and during the day, if there are kids that are uncomfortable and want to have their desk sanitized between classes, right, because the whole idea is you reduce the cohort as much as possible, wear the mask, socially distance, and reducing the spread. But again, there's emotions and comfort involved. So we're going to have, just as we have here, the cleaning equipment in the rooms. Students are not expected to clean those spaces, but we will work with them. And so that's part of our training and preparation to make sure we have the staff to do that. But I want to be clear, we're not going to be going through every classroom between classes and sanitizing those surfaces. Okay? Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, in talking with Dr. Mendoza, I've been meeting with Dr. Mendoza with the superintendents every week, once a week. You know, and again, this goes back to emotion and people's level of comfort when we're starting. And that's why we're offering that remote learning option. And that's all dependent on what the governor allows and approves. So I just want to make that point as well. But we recognize some people aren't going to be comfortable coming back. So we're going to work with them, right? My hope is that over time, we can earn their trust and people will be able to give back into a team. You know, I use myself as an example. I'm a little more comfortable. Of course, I still take the precautions, you know, clean the hands, make sure I wear a mask, all the rules here, the regulations as we divide. But I haven't stopped working and being out since March. I come in every day. So I have a different level. I saw a friend of mine last night and his wife, she hasn't left her house since March. She's a teacher in another district. She's scared to go back, you know, and again, I go back to the point. You know, it's a dynamic, fluid situation. And I've been telling our folks here internally, we really got to take it slow and make sure that we're being very mindful of where people are at and very supportive, right? And we have to make sure that we evidence to them that we've minimized the risk and that we're going to stay vigilant and we're dedicated to making sure that these safety, health and safety practices and protocols are in place. So that'll be, you know, that'll be a process.
So can you speak to the remote learning option and being able to transfer back and forth?
Sure. That is going to be a question that families have asked as well. So we'll head it again there, but I'll head it here through the board. If you're going to cover that, we can run it.
I don't want to ask a question.
We want to go through the summary.
Sure, cool. And again, thank you to the community out there for sticking with us. I know it's late. Again, this is going to be posted, this whole video will be posted, so you can go back and watch this at any time. So we can start the questions? For the next slide? Well, there's the questions for the board. Next slide, please. Okay, so the family and community questions. So we had well over 50 respondents. And Jeff DeVeronica, our Director of Public Information, and his assistant, Pat Hart, who did a phenomenal job of coding those and reducing them to themes. All right, so we have some commonly asked questions we're going to start with. Now, we're going to hit some others that we felt like were priority and we're prepared to answer now. Then like I had mentioned earlier, there's a third set that we're going to set in the parking lot. We're not going to forget them. But there's some things that are still in process as far as the planning. We're going to add that to that FAQ document. And we're going to popcorn back and forth between myself and some of the other administrators on the line. So if we go to the next slide, so here's some frequently asked questions. Here again, hopefully they'll pop up. There you go. So the first one. So how was it determined to have K-6 students attend four days, right? So we kind of talked about that. Twice as much as grade seven through 12. So if you look through the guidance from New York State from SEC, they've asked us to prioritize our youngest learners. Okay, so we did that. And we looked at our buildings and our neighborhood schools were a real benefit to us because we were able to space our students out. I did, like Chrissy and I talked about, splitting our kids and having them socially distanced, being very creative and collaborative as far as working with working within the staff that we have. So that was that decision. You know, a couple of districts came out and they said that they're going to have their kids go, their younger kids go five days a week. And we're not. The reason for that is twofold. Number one, elders are important. Again, going slow and so we can go fast later on, that we have that day in the middle and knowing the staff coming back and they're going to need time to process the plan and reflect, be supportive. Students are going to need that too. Now, that is a complicating factor for parents because they're going to have to come up with one day of childcare. So we're hoping to relieve some of that stress by making sure that across the board, we're scheduling kids by household so that they have older siblings that can help with that. My hope is if things go well, some day we can shift to five days. So that was that decision. Chrissy, anything to add on that?
No, I think you spoke to it well, and I would just add that, you know, certainly our responses to our family and parent survey, as you stated at the beginning, helped us to really prioritize getting back our youngest learners as well.
Thank you. Yep, absolutely. That was an important factor. Next question. Didn't we hire more teachers? How can classes be split up so they're small enough and still follow the six-foot social distancing guidelines? So I think we addressed that pretty well during the presentation. At this point, we're not hiring any additional staff. We're utilizing our teachers and TAs that we have. And as we talked about, we're using, you know, every inch that we need there within our buildings and repurposing some of those spaces for instructional use. And then we're going to be very, very prescribed as far as what those what those structures are, how the classrooms are laid out, so that we maintain those distances. And at times, kids will be asked to work in smaller groups, but then they're going to have to wear a mask, right? Or they're going to have dividers. So we're looking into those as well. So again, Chrissy and Karen, anything to add on that?
No.
Next question, please. What will be an approximate class size K-6 and 712? So again, we kind of spoke to that. It's going to be anywhere from the upper single digits in the high school up to 15 across the board with some of those larger spaces, as you saw, Chrissy's example of 21. But that's the all-purpose room in the elementary buildings. And the parents have been that. You certainly have. Those are pretty large spaces, you know, I would say. At least a classroom and a half of that, twice the size of a classroom. Next question, please. If the initial choice is a hybrid, can families opt out to remote and vice versa? So we put some thought into that, right? Kindergarten instructions is important. Opting from hybrid to remote, I think, is easy, right? So there isn't a lot of disruption of other people in that case. So if we get into the year and people come in and either the student or the family feels like, hey, this is too much. I want to opt into the remote, fully remote, they can do that. We'll ask them at that point to work with their home principal, okay? And we'll work through the process. That'll be pretty smooth. We can do that anytime. The challenge is the reverse, you know, so if you want to go remote, and things are going well, and a student or a parent says, hey, you know what, I'm ready to go back. Well, we're going to ask the families, if they're making the choice to go remote, it's going to be from first attendance, all right? The reason for that is kindergarten, kindergarten for the class and for the instructor, right? Because when they come back in, you've already have this dynamic that's been established. And we figured that at that ten-week And we figured that at that 10-week mark, that'll be a good break for those folks who want to do that. And I'm hoping that there's a lot of people who want to do that. Again, it goes back to earning their trust and making sure that people see that, you know, their kid, that we've reduced the risk, minimized the risk and the kids are safe and establishing.
Can you simply do that?
Yeah.
You can leave me tell them I can't come back?
We're providing them education.
So, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
What about a family that moves into the district? What are their options? Someone moves in on September 15th?
Sure. What are the options now?
So, I'm saying, they have your option. They have all their options coming.
Yep, because they're a new student. They're whatever. So, just like during the year, you know?
I didn't know if we were going to hold them out for seven weeks or something. Say we're going to do it remotely.
Nope. Nope. And those are kids that are unexpected, you know? Those are kids that they didn't necessarily have a choice, right? When they move. The other folks, though, we don't want to create a revolving door scenario, right? So, if we don't establish a point collectively, right? And I think that this is reasonable to ask parents to consider this. And this is the importance of making sure that we give them as much information as we move towards that deadline of the 14th so that they can make a well-formed decision. Because that is a 10-week commitment, right? But if we create this revolving door, continuity for the other students and for the teacher is going to be significantly compromised. And I think that will be tough for people, given everything that's on the plate. And I'm not sure that that sets a student up for success coming back in either, so. Okay. Next question, please. Is there a certain amount of time to commit to the hybrid model before opting out or opting in? So, I think we just kind of talked about that, right? Karen, Chrissy, anything to add to that?
No.
Okay. So, again, these are some of the most frequently asked questions. So, we have another page of frequently asked questions. You can go to the next page. First question. So, what will it look like now compared to last? Great question. And Karen and Chrissy have been doing some of the heavy lifting with our principals and staff on this. So, if you two could address this question, what will that look like structurally, ladies?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the biggest changes will be we have time to plan, we have time to coordinate, we have time to sit down with our teachers and think about what this could look like, should look like. So, I think there will certainly be more structure to the instruction, certainly compared to last spring, excuse me, and I can talk to this K6 level. There'll be more, you know, that face-to-face instruction for our students. And we'll be able to continue our high level of differentiation and targeted instruction to our students. So, that's, I think, one of the biggest differences. And Karen, I'll let you a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I think it really does come down to that structure and providing synchronous, you know, at the same time, learning opportunities and direct instruction, even if students are engaged in full remote. At the secondary level, they'll still be part of that either blue or gold cohort. And they will have that classroom teacher of record. There might be other teachers that support instruction through tutoring or SEL check-ins, monitoring their work progression. But they'll still have that comprehensive schedule. And so, those structures in the learning management system with the direct connection with the teacher will be there. Not that it was completely absent in the spring, but it was a little more dependent upon circumstance and given all of the different parameters that we were dealing with in the springtime with school coming to an abrupt close, you know, families trying to balance their home needs and school needs. So, this will have a lot tighter feel to it.
I would just add a couple of things, if you don't mind, ladies. Going back to those surveys, the thought exchange that we did initially with families, and I mentioned the number two, most commonly rated thought, was getting our kids back. Number one was quality instruction. That also surfaced on the survey where we had 2,100 persons quality instruction. So, Karen and Chrissy, like you said, they've been doing a lot of heavy lifting with their building principals and staff. And the continuity is definitely going to improve because we learned a lot from that, you know? I have thought, very reflective. People provided some great feedback, very thoughtful feedback. And so, they streamlined the use of the learning management system, things like communication. I think that this is an important reason why we chose the one model, 712, over the other so that rather than kids having five days between contact points with staff, their teachers, they're having two and then three, right? And then, they're structuring some creative ways to provide support on those Wednesdays for students as needed interventions. So, we're hopeful that this is going to be vastly improved. Again, you know, not to criticize the spring, but, you know, we built that, we built that whole model like over a better phase. And kudos to our staff because we continue to get better at it. But that was tough, tough for the families, so. Next question, please. Why do you have one group attending Monday, Tuesday, and the other Thursday, Friday? Aren't you splitting Tuesday, Friday? Are you putting Tuesday, Friday students more of this? So, we talked about that at this point. So, really, I think they argue that could have been around cleaning and sanitation. But we engage the professionals on that to make sure that we weren't. And again, every night, we have a responsibility to clean and sanitize. So, next question, please. What happens if a class, grade level, or building has a student/teacher test positive? Is the entire class or building quarantined? So, I spoke to it a little bit to that, right? I'm going to turn over to Michelle, that I had some things. But I want to give Michelle a chance because she's been working directly with our school nurse, Mary Piston, and also our school physician, Dr. Diggs. So, Michelle, anything you want to say about that?
Sorry. Yeah, just to reiterate, if a child in the class, a specific class is targeted through the work that we will do to keep track of where students have been, where adults in the building have been, and then working with the Monroe County Department of Health and their contact tracers, we have a sense of who they would recommend to us would need to be quarantined, we need to keep a close eye on. But immediately, once we knew things, we would work to keep the kids isolated within the school and work on getting them sent home till we knew more, while at the same time, keeping the child or adults that may have been identified as COVID-19 positive there confidential in nature and just really protect them as well.
So, again, with the nature, like you mentioned, in grade seven through 12, that's where you have the greatest complexity. You know, they were going to be able to reduce the cohort of kids to a greater degree than IHS. But that will impact the learning group that projects positive tests. One thing I do want to know is that creatively, kudos to Karen, Fitzer, one of the brilliant principals on this, we have some classes that when day students actually travel to IHS. So, we wanted to make sure that they weren't going into classrooms that were being used by IHS students, right? And then, you have the cross-contamination between buildings and not even impact two buildings if you have a positive test. So, they designated the space at the high school that is only going to be used by those classes. No high school classes are going to use it. So, the kids will come in. They won't walk down the hallway and interact with any other kids. It's a really short distance in these classrooms. And those classrooms are going to be only used by those day students. So, that'll help us to, you know, like I said, we want to minimize the chance of a spread, you know, through these different measures, so. But then, we would work with the county health department to determine, you know, what we would have to do. I think at the very minimum, it's 24 hours shutdown for those spaces. And, you know, you go through, you make them sanitized, like this in fact. And then, you take it from there, follow the guidance. Next question, please. What is the daily screening process for temperature checks, students and staff? So, to honor the work that James Brennan and Dan Fullerton did on this, they did a phenomenal job, you know? Dan Fullerton, right now, is taking some courses at Moore School. And he went through a decision analysis. And he analyzed a number of different platforms to do this. And they narrowed down the choice that we're going to make based on rationale and information. But gentlemen, can you just take us through how those temperatures are going to be processed every day, students and staff?
Do you want to grab that, Dan?
Sure, I'll start if that's okay. We are implementing a web app available on phones and computers with the primary goal that faculty and staff will screen themselves remotely before coming into the district. The standard COVID-19 exposure-type questions as well as temperature-taking, doing that in advance of coming onto the campus. They'll get an email reminder about that before they come in. And if they haven't put that in time, they'll get a follow-up reminder as well as a report at the building saying, this specific person may not have completed this daily screening. Please make sure they do before they come on campus. For students, we have that same app as well, that same system, but also have other alternatives in place as well for those who don't have easy access to the internet, including planning a paper-based form that is quickly dropped off once they get to the schools, the ability for building a designated person in each building to quickly see who has and has not filled out that survey and follow up quickly, which would then be a referral to the nurse's office or other designated persons in order to continue that screening.
So, these are in addition to the guidance according to CNC and DOH here and SED. Their guidance is that families conduct a temperature screen every day. So, we're going to have parents and tests and that. We can do that. We're going to offer the app where they can actually do that every day. But then, that's going to be parents' responsibility. Now, we understand that some parents won't be able to do that. So, as Dan said, there's going to be means where kids can do that as they come to school. So, we're providing as many options for families as possible. But, you know, a lot of that will happen at home. And according to the guidance, both students and staff, if you feel sick, you have a temperature. And again, if you know the medical guidance, the temperature is not the MOPL because you could be asymptomatic before you show signs, right? So, but if you feel sick or you have a temperature or one of those symptoms, we're going to ask people to stay home. Call your physician.
I've been starting my day every day like that. As I'm going to work, you know, and the first thing, first thing in the morning is a reminder to do my screening. Like, yeah, my app, so it's very familiar.
So, staff, according to the regulations, they have to, everybody has to do a temperature check. Staff have to do the screen. Students have to do it periodically. Yep. So, we're going to encourage families to do that screen every day.
I'm just wondering, I have an experience. Is that, do you have your own thermometer? Like, do you just use the ear thermometer that you have at home? Or does that have a temperature check? How do you do that?
The program that I have, which is a test, they don't have a fever. You don't.
Right.
Okay. So, that checking your thermometer.
There are several questions.
Right. Yeah, travel, though, I'm sure it's totally different.
Travel, right? Have you been exposed? Do you have a fever?
So, you don't have to take your to... Okay.
I tend to sit near the temperature over 100.
Right.
Well, you will have to. There's two different things here. There's the, there's a survey. There's a survey that staff will have to do every day, they need to scrap. Students will have to do periodically, but they both have to take a temperature every day. That is, that is a yes. So, families need to know that. They have to have the ability to take the temperature every day. Now, again, as Dan said, we're going to have options for students at every school, very close to the main entrance where they can have their temperature check. Right? They will have to do that every day.
A kid running to school there?
And we talked about that.
I think he's going to be over 100. Like, I can see that easily being over 100.
So, the nurses have talked about that. And that's why they have that isolation room, right? The ill student, where the student's going to be placed there. And they'll go through the conversation, over the assessment, like, hey, how long have you been here? But, you know, oh, I'm in school. Oh, why don't you sit over there? And then, we'll retake your temperature. Okay, right?
So, actually, that's, I mean, that's really valid. The other day, I was walking into a building. I was really, really warm to begin with. And I was pushing the limits of 100. And I have not been running a fever at all. But I was just really, really overheated. And she said, three more, you know, tenths of a degree, and you would have been in cool seat. Yeah, but it's very true.
Yeah. And again, you got to remember here, right? If we're committing to this, families that are committing to this are committing to public health. And so, I keep saying this in tweets and in messages. We're in together. And the strength of the system is based on us as individuals. So, we have to be vigilant. We have to do this every day. Got to commit to it. Got to commit to the test. Got to commit to staying home. If there's any questions about that, you have to commit to the social distancing and masking, hand hygiene. And all these things are critically important. And that's the power we have. Okay? So, those are the most frequently asked questions from those 55. You know, and again, they weren't all asked in that way, but Jeff and Pat did a great job of reducing them to themes. So, now, we have a couple more pages of questions. Important questions. Go to the next page. Okay. So, additional questions. The deadline to pick a model by the 14th. When will we receive more information? It's going to be forthcoming, right? So, we're continuing to work on this. We have a lot of the things worked out with the remote learning. But there's things like, there's some decisions that we have to make. And we're working through those. And we have to make sure that everybody's comfortable with those decisions. So, we're going to try to get information out as quickly as possible. But those conversations are happening right now, okay? So, there'll be that information that comes out periodically. Parents can watch for that. Karen, Chrissy, anything to add on that?
No. Like you mentioned before too, or maybe Chrissy mentioned, you know, typically, in the midst of the summer, we'll send out a welcome package to students. They might have a schedule, knowing that it might not be finalized. They'll get, you know, their final schedule when they walk into school on that first day. But even that, there might be a bit of a delay in that because of, you know, just sort of looking at the sections, having to balance, you know, where some of those shifts might have to occur. So, you know, as we get information from families, then we're better able to react and schedule appropriately.
All right. Second question. Are students who come to school without a mask going to be allowed in? They're not going to be allowed in without a mask. We have a responsibility to provide students and staff masks. So, a lot of people we know are going to come with masks, and they can do that. But we will have masks available at the front entrance in every building, or the entrance, wherever students are. Because we know that there's going to be different entrances for different cohorts of students. And bring them, you know, to reduce the density there. But we'll have the masks available right there when they walk in.
How does the multiple entrances, over the last few years, we've moved to the model of less entrances? Now we're going back to, I'll say, a wider number of entrances. Can you speak to that?
Yep. Yeah, so at the high school, I believe we're going to be utilizing three versus two. Is that right, Karen?
Sit down on your head.
What's that?
Sorry, sorry. I muted. The three main doors.
Yep. So at our main door, just during arrival dismissal, Mr. Bay, we always have security present and a second adult, like an administrator. That'll be consistent. We'll still have that in place, right? So we'll still have the safety protocols in place that we had last year. And we worked very hard and committed to that. But we'll also have, you know, means for kids to sanitize their hands when they come and go. And we'll also have the masks available. So. Will teachers be able to actually help students by touching them to write or draw, et cetera? So we talked a little bit about this and this will probably be something that, well, it can really happen across the board. When we're working with the younger students or students with disabilities or challenges physically. So Karen and Chrissy, you wanted to speak to that?
Sure. Um, you know, certainly we know at the younger levels, there's an important component is handwriting, pencil grip. And those, those early learning pieces. So teachers will be able to show, instruct. You know, we do want them to keep their distance, but I know that they're working on creative ways to still be able to support students. Certainly with our, our students with disabilities that may require some of the closer contact. You know, just ensuring that we have the proper P P E in place so that, you know, teachers, if they, they are coming into contact with students, that they are feeling safe. But then, of course, you know, going back to the previous slides, just the proper hygiene all the way through in any scenario.
So gloves available in those cases. Face shields available in addition to the masks, those types of things. Can we provide a virtual walkthrough of schools, classrooms, so we can see when students will be returning, what they will be returning to? And that was a great suggestion. And yes, we're going to take this person up on that. And we're going to be creating some videos where people can take a virtual walkthrough, what it will look like. We're going to, next week, like I said, with the reopening report on Monday, we're going to try to give people some layout. Then we're going to create some videos. Is it mandatory to attend four days or could there be a K six flex option with just two days? And the answer to that is no. And we have to commit because we're staffing in space for one or the other. And of course, again, we're trying to minimize the interaction, like the breaking of those cohorts and pods. So the answer to that is no. At this point, we've made the decision and that is our hybrid model, the four days a week. And then the other option is to fully revolve. So. Next slide, please. Well, students have masks on the entire time in school. So now, the regulations state that they need to wear masks when they cannot socially distance, right? When they are seated during direct instruction and socially, appropriately socially distanced. They're going to maintain that. They can take their masks off. A consideration that we're working through now, I'll just give you a heads up, is that initially going back to that, you know, where people are coming, meeting people where they're at. People are going to come back with high anxiety, really, really worried, staff especially. Because they're going to be coming in to, you know, 11 to 15 kids. So we may, we're in discussion, haven't committed to this yet, but as we enter in a certain number of days, we may ask kids to wear their masks more often. Okay? Even when they're physically distanced. And some of that is helping to reduce the anxiety and some of the fear. So that's under consideration, but we'll make that decision soon. And then as people become comfortable and we establish the habits and routines, then we will relax them. But we'll get more information on this. Of course, it'll be masks very spilt in. So that was something that the state encouraged as well. So there'll be certain times in a model like that, or even in, in the model that we initially described, there'll be times where kids are going to, and staff are going to be maintaining their social distance and they will be able to take off their mask for a period of time. What happens if a mask, if a student loses their mask, will that mask, if it's found, be thrown out? So, no, you know, we have a lost and found. I mean, if it's a disposable mask, yes. You know, we're not at peace because these are ones that we're going to provide. But if it's a, if it's a mask that's personalized, right? And they put some money into that, we'll have a place where, like other lost, where we place that. And people will come and get that. A lot of the fabric masks can be lodged, so we'll be able to do that. And this kind of goes along with the next question. Well, students, you're required to have their names in their masks so kids don't mix them up. That's a great suggestion. And yes, they will now. So, so that's why we have this dialogue. That's a great suggestion. And right from day one, if they have a reusable mask, something that's more durable. We're going to encourage them and ask them to make sure that they have their name in that. How about the bathrooms, especially in the K three buildings where one class will use one bathroom all day? It can be cleaned and disinfected throughout the day. Chrissy, you want to, you want to take this one? And change?
Yeah. Um, so absolutely, just like when you get up, anytime you get up from your desk or, you know, really anywhere that we go now, i- if the students need to go to the bathroom, they will be expected to wear their masks. So that should help to mitigate some of, some of the germ spreading within there. And would be continued to ask, you know, wash their hands after using the bathroom. And that will be all part of that protocol that, and those things that, especially at the younger grades, will be practiced at the beginning of the school year so that those students get into those healthy habits. But just like going into any other room of the building, we certainly have those precautions in place, so masks will be worn.
And then I would just add that, like I pointed out here, we have the disinfecting wipes. They'll do, kill the COVID-19. Those will be in, you know, classrooms and available. So if a student has a worry, then, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that we manage that and staff them clean and disinfect those. But we wouldn't be doing that routinely between uses. That'll be something that, you know, again, if people have a worry, we're going to work with people and have that available. Students wouldn't be responsible for that. We would have staff that we would call to do that.
That's to clean surfaces in the classroom?
Uh, surfaces, yeah. The kind of high, uh, high-touch surfaces, Dan. Like maybe a tabletop, taking it down, things like that. Yep.
What about personal?
Uh, yeah, so.
I'm just worried because we know this is a basketball. They wipe the screen the next time. Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're minimizing multi-use materials, right? And so every student's going to have their own computer, right? So they shouldn't be sharing computers. Dan, and I don't know, I know we had a conversation in working on ways that kids can properly clean their, their laptops. Which they should be doing anyways, right? And teaching them about that. But that is a worry because kids can damage those. So, so that, as far as minimizing the multi-use materials, that's part of the plan, right? As we're going through that with the buildings now. But Danny, you want to speak to laptops, anything you have there?
Sure. Standard disinfecting processes with the, the COVID wipes or other wipes work just fine on them. We've tested the materials already. And as their personal laptops traveling with the kids, not a big concern there. Lab lap, lab desktops, things like that in certain places in the buildings. We'll be coming up with a regular disinfecting process and wipe down of those devices prior to switching students on those devices.
Will elementary playgrounds be cleaned between different classes using that? The answer is no. So looking at the guidance on that and the research, because they're outside, the sunlight, there's some research behind that. As far as limiting the, the amount of time that the virus can live on those hard surfaces. It also is out in the open air. So what we're going to do is, is we've always done is to encourage students when they go out, just like when you go to Wegmans, sanitize your hands and then when you come back in and sanitize your hands. Don't touch your eyes, don't touch your face, right before touching mouth. So we'll be educating and we are coaching those kids. And as Chrissy said, it'll be an option if parents feel uncomfortable with their kids using the playgrounds, we'll have alter, alternative options for the kids to engage in some recess that don't involve the playground. Chrissy, anything to add to that?
Just that, you know, that process of sanitizing, either doing, either the gel or washing their hands before and after using the, the playground is, is a process that they already learned before and coming back from lunch. So that is something that our K three buildings have always done or have done for a very long time. Prior to, you know, COVID being a reality. And so they, they have that process already in, in their repertoires. And so we'll just extend that to different, different instances.
Thanks, Chrissy. I think there's one more page. No? That's it. Okay, there were more questions, like I said. So we're noting those. There was some crossover between the important questions as well. But if people are out there and you're wondering why we didn't address your question, we're not forgetting that. It's in the parking lot, that'll be part of the update that's forthcoming. Because we're continuing the planning and the conversations and some of the finer details. The plan will be posted tomorrow to our website, 53 pages long. We'll give the board an advanced screening of that. That's linked to the process right now with Jeff DeBrowick and Pat Hartman, just to make sure grammar's proper. And there's just word sniffing and then we'll be ready to post that. So what questions do we leave you with?
Can you speak to what virtual attendance looks like on Mason first days?
Yeah. So again, that's one of the things that's still a process, Mr. Metris. Karen, Chrissy, are you guys ready to talk at all about that?
Sure, we can, we can talk about some hypotheticals. The finalized protocol isn't, isn't set in stone yet. And, you know, Infinite Campus will still remain our repository for all of our attendance data as it is uploaded to the state. And it's part of our ESA requirement and, and, you know, just have to normally do. So thinking about, you know, for students that are engaged in remote learning or it's a remote learning day in the hybrid model. What are some of those synchronous opportunities that they might participate in that, that teachers could take attendance? Could there be a singular check-in that day as part of an advisory group? Where teachers could take, take attendance and then do that quick check-in? Office hour type or even through work engagement in things like Schoology discussions, completing a, a form or submitting an assignment, having, you know, that ongoing dialogue asynchronously. All are, are possible ways to do that. And so Mr. Miller, our Director of Data, is really looking at, you know, what are some ways that we might leverage Infinite Campus and leverage some of our other tools like Schoology in order to be able to do that? Chrissy, any, anything different? I mean, it's the one day at K six.
No, you described it very well, Mrs. Winter.
Thanks.
Yeah, please. Any other questions?
I have two. I, I've been thinking a lot, but I wanted to follow up a little bit and push a little harder on the classroom switches that they've been high school. I wanted to speak to like. So kids are allowed to take masks out for social distancing? So I've been social distancing this whole time. I've been breathing all over this desk. I'm really, I'm concerned about the switching. If masks are coming off and kids are switching, I think, I'm worried about my daughter's switching and sitting at this desk right now. Without a proper standard. I don't know if it's possible, but I, I'm concerned about that.
I'll just shoot you straight, it's not possible. We just don't have the staff to do that. And that isn't the role of a classroom teacher, right? So, you know, as we, as we go through this, again, going back to the conversation with Dr. Mendoza. You know, you're minimizing the risk, you're taking all the precautions, but that's why there's the choice. And some, some folks may feel comfortable with that, some folks may not. And so if folks are not, then we'll have to sanitize those.
Can, so students are not allowed to grab one of those wipes and do it themselves? Can't come into class and grab one?
No, we cannot make that a responsibility of the student. They could.
Can they choose to?
They can't, yes. We can't ask them to do that. But they could. No, no, go ahead.
If I tell my daughters, listen, when you're switching, you can have a wipe, you wipe your desk.
Yep, they'll be available. And, and if they're not comfortable with touching them, then they won't do it, right? So the other thing is, you know, this is why we're also going through the conversation around masking at all times initially. Right? Because some people are going to be pretty worried. So we, we're considering having kids wear masks for greater durations upfront. And then, again, watching the spread too, watching the infection rate. So that would be an important factor as well. But I'll go back to Dr. Mendoza and, you know, part of his point was that, you know, it's just like going out to Wegmans, guessing your car, something like that. If you've done that since this pandemic started, you've taken some level of risk, right? And you've chosen to do that. There's some people that have it. I have a niece that hasn't left her house. She has everything delivered, but she's not willing to take that risk, right? And I respect that. But, but we're going to do everything we can to offer all of the, all of the resources to minimize that to the greatest extent. So, but I do respect that there's going to be some folks that just aren't willing to send their kids back and take that risk. And we're going to do everything that we can to minimize that.
Or we do have enough.
Yep.
Supply.
Yep.
The next one's a softball, easier one. The kid chooses to pull them up. They're still eligible for sports.
Yes. Yep. You know, and I would say that, you know, that the, the extracurriculars and athletics are up in the air. I guess I would, I would personally question if they're willing to come and, you know, then it, that's kind of contradictory. Right? But we'll cross those bridges. What's that?
A sweater.
Yeah, there might be, exactly. So that's why, that's why I think you take it on a case by case basis. And that's why I say, I would say, you know, I wouldn't say, oh, like it, no. I think we'll cross those bridges as we get to them. Right now, sports will start at the earliest September 21st. So again, I think you take those things into consideration. I think we have some really, right? Engaged families who are going to make, who are going to really give that some deep consideration before they, before they were to go remote and then have their child also participate in that. So we'll work through that, but long and short of it, yes.
Just one more thing to add about the standardization and seating in classrooms. So at both Dick and the High School, those buildings will be at half capacity as will our classrooms. And so certainly classroom teachers as part of their development of their classroom community might establish, you know, seating for, if classes are back to back, for instance, you know, they might alternate the seats that, that students use during, during that time. So that's yet another way to minimize, minimize the risk and to provide some of that just time for, you know, things to dissipate and, you know, kind of move from there, so.
I mean, but again, that doesn't totally minimize the risk because there's still going to be some other kids using that desk during the day. Right? Sounds up. Yeah. But it, but it, again, reduces the cohort that would be using that. Okay? Thanks, Karen.
We need to move. Store it. Just so.
That's that critical question, Mr. Bay, that's been asked. So we're finding creative ways, we're finding creative ways to store furniture. Yep.
Do that locally here?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's one of the benefits of, of having the decommissioned elementary schools and we still have some space there. Other questions?
Do you have more details at this point about how social distancing on buses will look?
I do. And James, you can, you can chime in. So we're going to maximize the social distancing on buses, right? And so Mary Jo Nugent, our director, is prepared to map that out. She has some ideas. But again, that's why getting those final numbers of the kids that are going to be riding in, in mid-August is important. But we're going to maximize that social distance. Only siblings or people in the same household are going to be able to sit together. Windows are going to be cracked and open, right? Increase airflow. All this is part of the regulation. Kids are going to be masked from the time they step into the bus stop, right? If they're waiting at a centralized pickup point. Throughout the time that they're on the bus and when they disembark. Right? They're not going to take that mask off until they get to their classroom or seated for desk. And then they're going to be reminded and encouraged to sanitize their hands along the way. So I can't tell you exactly like the layout because that's going to be dependent on how many kids are actually riding the bus on those roads. James, anything to add on that?
No, I mean, it, the state.
No, I mean, it, the state addresses the challenges inherent in terms of transportation, where they talk about the idea of the social distancing or masking, recognizing that because you're just kind of limited to the confines of a bus, that what you talked about in terms of seat arrangements and other creative means are definitely things to employ, but the key piece is that masking piece during transport of busing.
Can you, so a living document? Do you expect that, and I get that means that it'll evolve and everything has been evolved. Do you expect another waypoint from the state or the protocol for education like we have for tomorrow? Like it'll be another due date and another due date?
This is it, that's a great question. So we hit, so tomorrow, when I, when I submit this, there's a number of assurances that I have to give them. Got to check them. And we've looked at all those things and we, we made sure that all of those things are addressed in our plan. But we recognize the fact that this plan is gonna be a document that families use, communities use to understand what that will look like. So I say a living document because, you know, we hit all of the assurances. But some of the details beneath that, we're still working out, and I think it's important that we convey those to families that are there. So in, in that way, they will be a living document. And this is where, right now, if you look at the plans for the ten buildings, they're pretty much the same. But as we continue more deeply in this planning process, we'll start to diverge more. But we want to make sure, we're making a commitment to make sure, to making sure that those are kept up to date. So if a family has a question, they can use that as a resource gather.
Can we speak about diverging more? I don't understand.
Yeah.
So traditionally, over there?
I don't have a definite answer to that, John, they could. I, I guess an example I might give is around how kids enter and exit the building, right? So we're finalizing the number of entrances. You know, we're finalizing how we're gonna stagger kids. You know, things like that, you know, that brought up a good one, the wrong masking. I mean, we're gonna continue to have that kind of conversation and upfront, we're gonna lean towards having our kids wear masks for longer durations. And again, if that, if the circumstances, both infection rate and just the tone of our students and staff and community is in a place where we feel like we have to extend that, we'll extend that. You know, so those are the different ways that maybe you want.
So to go to the version that if for some reason the governor lifts the emergency order and so, are we planning to like that next Monday, 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 school, everyone? I'm just saying, if it ended.
It depends on the guidance, John. It, it depends on the guidance. I think the governor would tell us, you know. I mean, we're free to have all our kids back full-time now if we have the space to keep them socially distanced.
I'm saying that the social distancing component always goes away.
Again, I think that would be included in the direction. If it goes away, it's basically solved.
That's right. I mean, it's been, been that so bad.
I'm saying, but have we thought about that? What would be our plan? Would we start?
Well, that's, that's why.
Time instruction like the following Monday?
Again, I'm not prepared because that'll be dependent on the circumstances when we're at the time of the year. I mean, that all go into the conversation, John? You know, there's potential for us to do that? I don't know. I mean, we'll have to decide that if that's if and when that happens, and only if that does happen during the year. But one of the points of our plan, I point out, is that we did built in that, that flexibility, the fact that this could be dynamic. We didn't blow up our master schedule at the upper grades. The reason why we didn't do that is because if you do that and then things do get better, you have a lot more work to do and it's gonna take you a longer time to slip back into that normal mob. So we tried to, just tried to protect that throughout the process to make sure that we have the ability to do that if and when the circumstances warrant. Yep. Anything else? Yeah, Matt?
In the event that a vaccination becomes available, that purely based on state guidance, are those decisions made in a county or a school?
It's a great question. Again, I don't have a good answer to that. I would say that throughout this whole experience, there's been a back and forth locally with talking with the local health officials. But at the end of the day, the governor, you know? So if we're in a situation like that, I would expect that the governor would give us direction. They'd have to, the vaccine being available, they'd have to put that mandatory vaccine for schools.
We couldn't, we couldn't say you can't come back, you know? Unless they say you gotta have it.
Yeah.
We can only enforce the ones that we gotta have.
Sorry, come up with that next question. Do we have a procedure in place for refusals? I won't wear a mask.
Yeah, for code of conduct. So I spoke a little bit to that on our, on the interview I did. The point being that we're, we're evolving as a, we're evolving as a restorative district, right? So we're building in restorative practices, not only into our buildings to build community, but also into our code of conduct and the way that we conduct this. So the point that I made is, hey, we're gonna frontboard a lot of training, right? Reinforcing that, making sure it's very clear about the reasons why it's important to wear a mask. And we're gonna coach kids. There might be a kid, you know, who, who legitimately forgets, right? So we're gonna work with them. But then you're gonna have the kids that are just defiant or maybe they're repeat offenders. Well, our code of conduct, right? If, this is a very clear expectation. It's a regulation, it's not a motion. You know, I can't even tell you that you can't wear a mask if you're not socially distanced. Can't do it. You're learning to do it. So that would be a subordination. And we handle it as we normally would through accidents, subordination, student contact, through progressive so, yeah, we involve the family. Have the conversations, so. Okay? But we will not, and I want to make this clear because I think it came off the wrong way to some folks. We're not gonna allow kids to be in school without masks in areas where they have where they're required to wear masks. That's not gonna happen. It's a requirement.
One of the slides mentioned that the Raptor system is going to be used for managing visitors.
Yeah.
Are there plans to significantly reduce or limit the visitation at schools compared to normal state last year?
That's still part of the ongoing conversation, that. Yeah. But that's something that is part of the guidance, is to consider that. So we haven't worked out all of the details as far as what we would direct people, but that'll be part of the consideration.
We discussed scenarios earlier where students may need to quarantine or a building may need to close for 24 hours, but those become remote construction days or the buildings for cohorts, or how would that work?
Yep. Yep. So we would have to transition to whatever the plan's worth of providing that instruction remotely for whatever that duration of time is. And again, we would have to work through that depending on the scenario. But yeah, those would be, just like the experience in the spring.
I'm not asking that we do this necessarily tonight, especially because of our, but maybe in the fact that you come out, one of the concerns that I heard from a parent, a parent of a student in the upper grades is splitting the class in half and that socialization between the two, the blue and the gold groups. You know, student, student A is in, and the blue and olive is or her friends are in, in gold. So that, how are we going to provide for that, the, the social, emotional part?
Well, I can speak to that, you know? That, that, that is gonna be a tough one. I mean, there's some things that really compromise during this. I would say right now, Ian, again, we'll continue the conversations at a really low level, but I, I would approach that as I would if there's a, you know, there's a request for a student to change classes because their friends are in a certain section and they want to be in that section. Generally, we haven't used that as a reason to disrupt the schedule like that. And again, we're creating, creating this schedule and the cohorting of kids, they're the blue and the gold days in a way that will allow households to best manage their situations with childcare and streamline just coordination activities with their kids. And so at this point, I don't expect that we would get in a situation where we would be customizing that to specific requests. Because I think that will get pretty hairy. So I think that is, that's a great question. We should clarify that upfront. That's one of the consequences of coming back and, yeah, it's not gonna be perfect. They may not see some of their friends as much as they provide to. But again, I think as a community, yeah, the power we have is to really stay focused and committed to public help, to community help. So there'll be a little bit of sacrifice there.
One of the, one of the ways, Ian, though, that, that might be mitigated a bit, you know, if you think about, our teachers will still have those students as, as part of their first period class, right? And so whether it's in our learning management system, how they structure discussions might not just be limited to those 12 students that are now in their blue cohort or blue group, right? So how are our teachers? And that's, that's on us as part of that ease into the school year and professional development, building community, not just within that small group, but across the larger school community. You know, we all, we're, we're all around the great high school, we're all DAK. So how do we, how do we build those bridges and do it in a, in a way that capitalizes on that? So while they might not be physically together on the same days on campus, they're still engaging academically and helping one another grow and learn.
Yeah, and that was Karen, and that was exactly, you know, one of my thoughts too, that there may be ways, you know, a truly hybrid model where, you know, class, the blue class is, is in, physically in person and maybe there would be an opportunity to pull in the gold group for a discussion. So that, that, those might be the ways.
Yeah, I was addressing it, kind of physical.
Yeah, right, exactly.
We build in those opportunities as we can.
It's tricky, I mean, it's trickier, that's all the tech, technology and it certainly, you know, I would imagine across the building can't be done all day, every day, but, but I think that there are ways that we can be creative.
Any else?
There's students at the high school level that take courses or instructional paths, like Bosie, that is that part of the planning at the district level or is that continuing how Bosie decides to go forward or?
They're still gonna offer their programs. And, you know, another less significant piece of information that added to the decision to establish a model there at seven twelve was that the majority of schools in our Bosies are gonna be going Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. But Bosies did tell me, like, they're setting up their classes where even if we're off step there with them, they would still accommodate the kids because the kids are gonna be doing most of their hands-on, problem-based, you know, learning in, in, whether on, on campus. So they said that'll, again, be very fluid and make room for that. But all of those programs will be offered. Again, to, to provide the social distancing, they're gonna have to reduce the number of days that the kids are in session, but they're still working out through some of the details on that. Those are the programs.
Is there more question, Aaron? Should people continue emailing Jeff DeBronck?
Continue to email Jeff DeBronck before considering some other additional points of contact. In contact or building principles at this point? At children?
Yep, okay. Um, incredible, an incredible amount of work. Yeah. Thank you to everyone on Zoom who, we don't see you, but we know you're there. Thank you to everyone who tuned in and come with us and stayed and listened. This is incredibly unique period of time. I mean, it's cliche to say I'm tired of waters, but what I'm, what I'm seeing is tireless. I mean, this is unbelievable, this is my whole work here. So I just wanted to say thanks. Appreciate it very much as, as a board member, as a dad with three kids going to school here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having me. Yeah. Do you want, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session? Do we have a reason to go to the executive session, I should ask first?
Yes.
We do? Is there a motion to adjourn that executive session to discussing? So, thank you, second, second, Mr. Metzger Sullivan, favor? Aye? Anybody opposed? Six, zero. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic job on the cut. I had no feeling issues whatsoever. If anybody talked.
I know, I wondered about that.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask how we did it.
I turned it up.
I couldn't do it.
Is that?
Comes out here. Yeah, it's.
I have always struggled with like group video conversation.
Are we still on? Is it live? Nope, we're off.